Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, November 25th, 2019. We're here for the purpose of the committee as a whole. I would ask that you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Malone, please call the roll.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Kumski. York, absent. Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Conquest.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Mollner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Thirteen present and one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. We are in session. On to announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Any announcements? Anyone? Anyone? On to public comments. Clerk Malone? Nobody signed up for public comment? Is there anyone in the audience?
No one.
Anyone at this time who did not sign up for our public comment on our signing sheet who wishes to address the council at this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, that will close public comment for the evening. Down to business before the committee agenda. Item four. Municipal Utility Fund, city manager.
Thank you. So we've made some great headway on this. And where we'd like to start tonight is continue, I guess, with Public Works and Municipal Utility Fund, which of course is sewer and water. Director Killian is here to do that. And we'll also talk Parking and Capital Improvement Fund with him, and then move on from there. It's our hope tonight to get through everything that's in the shaded, which is L, the interfund transfers. That would leave circle back items for next week.
Say that again with you.
We hope to get through L today, and then that'll leave circle back items for December 2nd, next week.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we'll start with the, in your budget book, it's on page 190. I'll go over some major projects that we've completed over the last several years. And some of them, which we finished up this year, have had some major impacts on our operations. In the water divisions itself, if you notice in town, we've now completed painting all three of our water towers. So those are all done. We'll just keep them on a better maintenance schedule with cleaning throughout that. We have also completed the roof and had mason repairs at all three of our ground storage reservoirs this past year. When you look at the city fire hydrants, half of all of our fire hydrants have been sandblasted and painted with the color coating, which allows the fire department and other staff to see what flows are available, with the other half to be painted in the coming year. The water main replacement program, we're continuing to replace 3.3 million in the water main, which is about 1.4 miles per year out of the 188 miles of water main that we have in the ground. One of our more successful programs that we finished up in the past year, of course, was our meter replacement program, along with the Water Smart and the Zone Scan. To date, 26% of all of our accounts are signed up for the Water Smart program. So that's 3,972 residences. So we continue to see increases in that occurring. Of course, we want to see more. Try to get everybody to sign up. One thing to note, the Water Smart system has detected 22,494 private leaks in houses, whether toilets, leaky faucets, garden hoses. So the city continues to work well. Over almost 400 people have also used the Water Smart system as ways to communicate with the water department and our water billing staff. So that's an added feature. And now, what it comes down to good with the meters is water purchases for this year so far are down 7%. And we think that's because, in part, part was the rainy season we had earlier, but part of it is also because people are now fixing the small leaks in their toilets, and of course, our own main breaks that we've been repairing at a faster rate. An important note is our unaccounted-for water flow, which was approaching the 18% to 20% in past years. So far this year is down to 12%. We've actually had a month or two where it's been down to the lowest 4% or 5% in a given month. So we're definitely now able to keep more track of our incoming water and outgoing water. And then as an average, we were saving about, we're figuring this year, about 350,000 gallons per day of water is what we're saving by picking up these leaks throughout the city that we're not purchasing anymore or the residents are paying for. If we move on to the sanitary side and the consent order, if you remember, we have the consent order for the southwest part of the city. We're currently on track to stay in compliance with the EPA consent order, which is due to have everything finished, the final report, at the end of 2021. If you remember, to date, we've completed the Sailor Jackson lift station, the force mains, the excess flow tank, the I&amp;I study, which resulted in the continued disconnection of illegal sumps. To date, about a little over half of those have been completed in the consent area. And we do have several others that are lined up to be completed this year still. So that continues to move forward. And then we get to actually the big costs of what we're looking at. The water treatment facility continues probably to be a major focus of projects, has been in the past, and will continue for the next 10 years. So if you remember, we have just a little under $29 million out in IEPA loans that have covered everything from new roofs for the buildings, new HVAC systems, our new raw scoop, sorry, raw screw pumps, which actually are going in this week. We have new effluent sampler, underground work, electrical building, et cetera. So that continues to be the major portion of that $29 million worth of work. In the future, and not to scare everybody, but it is about nine years down the road we're anticipating, in the next year or so, we're going to see about $1 million to rehave our laboratory that we have at the site so we can do our own house water samples for some of the upcoming testing we're going to be required to do. We're also showing that there's going to be approximately a $10 million project to replace the clarifiers in the pumping systems related to that at the plant itself. In the big one that we have, we are going to have to start treating for phosphorus. It's the, all the permits are now including phosphoric limits. We are now currently estimating that the construction cost of that is going to be $36 million system at the treatment plant. And along with that, you're going to have increased operation costs, chemical costs, ledge hauling costs. So, and again, that's probably what we're expecting. It'll have to be online in 2028. So you'll start to see some planning on that in the future years of that process moving forward. And then along with that, we expect probably another 14 million just for miscellaneous improvements to handle the increase with that going on out there. So if we move on again, if we go to page 20, actually 199, if we get into the actual budget, the water administration budget. The main focus there is we do have our cross-connection program. We are at $52,000 this year for the first time in many years. We are due for our citywide cross-connection control program, the survey. That is to make sure that we don't have any interconnects with our potable water system. And then there's also in the capital account, there's the MUF share for this portion of the Public Works garage. So I guess we could stop there if there's any questions on water admin.
Questions for Howard up until this? Anyone? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Excuse me. In regards to the new water meters and finding leaks, it's all good information. I was trying to jot down notes as you were speaking on some of those data points. I believe it was stated that the unaccounted water was somewhere around the 28% mark, and we're roughly around 12% now. I would make the assumption that part of that is from the water meters. I know when we were going through the water meter replacement, we were finding various sizes, undocumented sizes of water lines, et cetera. Has that been part of the percentage as well to reduce it so significantly of not knowing about the right size of water connections to some either homes and/or businesses?
And again, that would be more of a billing issue, I believe. And again, we only went from 18% down to 12%, not 28%. But yeah, these are just, again, these are unaudited numbers. This is not the final accounting for the year. But this is comparing what we are purchasing from the DuPage Water Commission to what we're billing out currently on all of our meters. So as the meters were approved, as people had large meters, we reduced them to smaller meters. We're getting more accurate reads on that. So you do have those occurring with the unaccounted-for flow. Of course, with the main breaks, then, we're able to pick up on a faster schedule.
So we're thinking that 6% difference is due to early detection of main breaks and the accuracy of the meters themselves?
Right, and people fixing leaks on their, leaks that they had.
Thanks.
Alderman Dunn.
I was just wondering, I know with the new meters, they're able to pick up low flow better, where I guess with the old meters, I'm, did not. Can we estimate how much more we're able to bill as a result of that?
I don't know if we have that. No, we're just actually getting what the new reads are. There's no way to estimate which ones were. And we also think we're seeing that as people are actually seeing the true leaks occurring in a more accurate read, they might be reducing their own water usage. Just because they might be consuming more. They thought in the past they were consuming more and not getting billed for it.
Yeah, I was just wanting, there was unaccounted, there was unaccounted for low flow that couldn't be measured before, and now it is. And we can bill for that now because it's registering. I was wondering if we had an estimate. Okay.
I can tell you, my daughter went to college, and that's the reason there's a 7% drop.
Anyone else?
Alderman Bram.
Yeah, follow up on that same topic. I thought I remember that either there is or soon to be either state or federal mandate that we're under 10% of unaccounted-for water. If so, when is that going to happen? And then, how are we going to get there? Because we're still not there even with the new meters, it seems like.
When does the mandate take effect?
12% was September of this year, or 18?
Yeah, you can, Paul, ask.
Thank you. We need it to be at 12% as of September of 2018. And 2020 is when we need to be at 10%. The numbers that Howard is giving you are showing 20%, 30% water losses in the early part of this year. Polar vortex, things like that, that had occurred. The overall average, even with those high numbers, are 12%. May was 4%, June was 7%. Numbers are down at the 10% or lower percent in most months after we got out of winter. So that is something that we're going to be looking at this year.
So we figure to be, on average, by 2020, below, consistently below 10%?
That is our intention and goal, yes.
Is that end of 2020, or?
September.
September as well? Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. This is a big piece of the budget, obviously. Can you speak to the philosophy as you've gone through the budgeting process in regards to capital, in regards to projects, and in regards to responsibly recommending projects, but putting them in a cadence that is somewhat affordable, for lack of a better question or way of framing the question?
I'll start, and then I'll ask Howard to add to that. So with any of the budgeting, we look at resources and our needs. Clearly, we had some needs with the wastewater treatment plant, which were paramount to everything. And so we've put quite a few improvements into that asset over the last few years and continuing to. The next big capital item that we have outside of what Howard just mentioned are the stormwater stations that we're looking at. And so I've asked Howard and Paul to look at, how can we better space those so that we're not getting a big hit in just a couple of years? And so they are looking at that to see how we can better space those out. Something unrelated to water and sewer, but has been brought up as well as the potential police station improvements, and what that looks like and when that looks like. And so we're looking at our bond issues and when those will drop off. That's a significant part of when we can try to get some improvements done, barring any emergencies. We look at that as well to see that finance and how that may space out and ladder out over a number of years. And so I'll turn it back to Howard to answer kind of the, looking at the water and sewer part.
So what had happened is probably the last 20 years, the system was basically maintained to a minimum level, honestly. So you had a lot of projects which were thought of, never moved forward. You had a lot of projects, I've been here a little over five years now, that were in the budget, and they kept being delayed. The water meter program itself, I believe, was delayed probably almost six to 10 years from when it was originally approved. And part of that was due to the staffing we had, just didn't see these as important. It just kept being delayed. What Paul has done is he's come forward, and if you look at all these studies we've done, is we're trying to get a true picture of instead of just what one person or two people may think needs to be done, we're trying to get an overall scope of what needs to be done at all these facilities. So we've done a whole facilities assessment of the water system, of the wastewater plant, the sanitary sewer system, and to some extent, the water system. So that actually gives us what are the true needs long-term of all these facilities, and then cost it out and try to move forward. Some of these, like the phosphorus, aren't maintenance. Those are brand-new items that we're going to be regulated to put into place. The three screw pumps failing this year within a week of each other was unplanned. But we are looking at now, and Paul has, for instance, there were some projects that we had budgeted, we were almost getting ready to design, but we're finding that with the phosphorus program coming up, that building may need to be moved. So we've actually stopped that building from going forward because no need to spend several million on a project we have to move in a couple of years. So we are looking at it that way. And I think, you know, we're probably honestly Tom's worst nightmare in the water and sewer department keeps him up at night of what we're trying to spend. But we do keep in line what we can afford. But there are some things that, if you do one process, it leads to the next process being done and moving forward. If you remember, we have a large project for all the underground at the treatment plant. And that's because it started out as just our gas lines failed out there. So when we looked at replacing the gas lines, we realized that we didn't have the proper water lines everywhere. And then the electrical distribution system at eight buildings was kind of chained together, where if you lost one building, you'd lose the next seven behind it. So you know, now we're building a building that's a central distribution building to more control it. So it's a little bit more smart planning, but a lot of these are just deferred projects that haven't been done over the last 20 years. The plant itself is worth about $150 million you have as an asset out there. So you know, we're, now we're to the point we're trying to keep it up and running with all the new regulations.
And I appreciate all that, and I know, I remember hearing in the past about how, you know, it was kind of not maintained well or to the minimum level. And I appreciate that we've got to catch up. And I think everyone knows that we're facing lots of pressures. We've got a letter from my neighbors who are very mad about the tax increase. Didn't want to come to me first, but anyhow, the, we're facing pressure, we're facing a lot of pressure on what we can afford. And I think, you know, I just, I want to ask everyone to really challenge all of our thinking to not like everything that maybe we have to do, we have to do what we have to do, but where is that fine line between what we want, would be nice to do, and just continue to challenge everyone to be as prudent and responsible as we can? Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Levin.
Thank you. On the Water Smart, or the Smart Meter Program, I got to say, you know, I know the mayor talked about an experience in finding a toilet running. And you know, this weekend, I got an alert. I turned off everything, every toilet, everything. I'm still using five gallons an hour. But it's interesting because otherwise, I would never have known. I still don't know what the problem is. But, so I think it's a great program. But in terms of, for us as a city, not on an individual level, you know, if we stop using 1,000 gallons that's not wasted, because I'm paying for it, but maybe Tom knows the answer better, but what's the savings to the city as opposed to the resident for stopping the wasted water? And let me ask that question first.
The value of the wasted water?
Yeah, so we buy X number of gallons from the DuPage Water Commission, and then we're, in theory, you'd want to charge all that back to whatever it is. So to not have that go through a meter, it's still treated water. And so we still have to go through our processes, which cost money. Obviously, our distribution center system costs money to maintain. So that's why we went with the new water meter system to make sure that we could catch every gallon possible. Does that answer your question, Alderman?
Yeah, I think so. I'll try to answer it because I had to pitch this to DMMC when we became the award-winning city for this. But what Scott, what Alderman Levin, I believe, is asking is, okay, how many leaks, we understand that we're more efficient as a city overall. Certainly, I'm more efficient. All the residents are more efficient. But our water use is down, and part of it is, how much did we lose before we deliver it to the paying customer? I know for a fact that, and this is where it's difficult to calculate, but since I'm a politician, I can, you know, oh yeah, I'll round it off for you. We used to do water detection leaks. Was it once a year? Once a year, okay? So the question is, when we find a leak, how long would that leak have gone without finding it? I know specifically, there was one leak where it was going right out of the system, right into our stormwater system, never would have found it. 250 gallons a minute or something ridiculous like that. When would we have found it? Would we have found it in our normal process? A year from now? Two years from now? I don't know. But that alone, roughly $1 million. So I was going to mention this at the end, is that rarely, in my 13, 12 years as an elected official, have we done capital projects that truly pay off, and you can like look on the ledger and pay off. And having a more efficient water system in the city of Elmhurst not only pays off personally because I think we're detecting leaks, like you and I have found, and as a resident, you're more efficient with your water. But as the supplier of the water, we've become more efficient. A, we find leaks before they bubble up, and sometimes it could take three weeks before they bubble up. B, just the labor to do it on a Tuesday at 2:00 in the afternoon versus New Year's Eve is unbelievable, the amount of savings. So I, that's where I think you were going with your question?
Yes, exactly.
And, I mean, almost to Alderman Toledo's point, I know taxes, no one's thrilled about paying taxes. This is one where our Public Works Department is actually, there's a little ROI on the investment. It's not, we have to do. So, I mean, that was going to be my final statement before we moved on, was this specific issue, not only the Water Smart, but the fixed water detection, where for us, it was once a year. We throw a dart at the dartboard. Now it's batch processing. We get it on a daily basis, so.
And just as a quick example, we've had 118 main breaks this year already.
118?
118.
That seems record-breaking, Howard.
No.
What do we get, what do we have on a normal?
What's our average, Paul?
Over the last five years?
Yeah.
About 120?
Yeah.
Like the way Paul had that at the top of his head.
All right, additional questions? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. We're talking a lot about the new water meters and storm and sanitary. We talked a little bit, I think City Manager Grabowski touched on it a little bit ago, about the distribution system. There are a lot of upcoming projects for water, storm, water distribution, sanitary, et cetera, like the phosphorus. Do we have an overall, and I know we have the CEB, right? I understand that. But do we have an overall list of big projects? One of which, and I think I've spoken to Paul offline about this, is that, you know, there's still some water service lines that may or may not be led in the city of Elmhurst. So what is our, and I know it's a city council policy decision on how we do that, but what is, do we have an idea and what the estimated cost of something like that is? And how does that fit in the priority structure of all these other large projects that are coming down the line?
We have, we know we have approximately 1,400 lead services still in the city. Right now, what we do is when we do a project, either the storm sewer project going down the street or the water main projects, we're replacing our portion from the, from the main up to the B-box. So that's included in those costs. If the city were to go in, or if the state or the federal government regulated the removal of those lead lines all the way up to the houses, we're probably talking at least $10,000 to $15,000 per house to change out those lines, just as an overall project by itself.
And do we, do we have like a priority list of all these different projects that we know about? We obviously can't fund them all, or at least right away. Do we have a good idea of where, just as an example, not saying you have to speak to it, but where something like that would sit compared to everything else?
Since it's not a requirement that we're forced to do yet, it's, again, it's just included in all the projects. It's in the back of our minds that it may be coming up. But when we do, for instance, all the water main projects, there's a lot that comes in. We don't just look at the lead service areas. You know, we look at the history of breaks on there, what other projects we have coming up on those streets. Because we don't, we're coordinating it better so we're not paving a street and then tearing up the water main two years later. So we're trying to coordinate those items itself.
Thank you. An actual page question, if I may?
Sure.
Page 196. Couple items on here, one of which being contractual services, which is?
30.
30? At the top of the page. It's projected to significantly go down. What was, or what is currently contractual services utilized for wastewater administration?
Page 196, line 30.
Yeah, the first line 30.
Yeah, first line 30 under wastewater admin.
Reason why I ask is because it's, well, not in half, but it's going from what's estimated as $740,000 going down to close to $500,000. So a significant drop in expenses.
So it goes in at 80, 20?
Okay, okay. The drop in the individual line for engineering is because the engineering now for all the future projects are actually going into the EPA loans itself. So it's into the actual project code itself. Where in the past, they were separate out of the MUF fund.
So it's an accounting thing?
And that coordinates to page 208. It's got more detail on that as a breakout of that.
Same, I guess the same answer would apply for the next line, 30, on sanitary sewers. But here, the cost is, well, according, looking at estimate, it's 1.1 million going up to close to 1.5. So the opposite direction.
If it's just an accounting thing, that's fine. We can do that.
Yeah, budget year to budget year, it's actually decreasing by 50,000. So that was just our estimate of where we were going to be through the end of the year is the 1.1.
Thanks.
Alderman Muller, did you have your hand up? Somebody over there? Alderman Dunn? There you go.
Yeah, I did, actually. I know we've been accelerating our investment in the water mains, also in the sanitary lining projects. They're about $3 million. Is, when are we going to start seeing the down, that we're going to get over that hump and see less investment required? I know we're at an accelerated pace. Or will we?
On the water mains, you won't see a decrease. And it's, actually, we're holding the line this year, but again, we're only replacing 1.4 miles?
1.1.
Or 2.1 miles out of 188 miles of water mains. So, you know, that's going to have to keep going, if not increase. And that's one of the things we are cutting back on, is we know, you know, we had to, we only had the budget for that certain amount. Again, you know, water mains don't last, you know, at this rate, you're talking 100 to 150 years to replace a water main, which they won't last that long. So you'll continue to see acceleration of those items. In the wastewater, the sewer lining, a lot of that was strictly in the consent area. And you'll slowly see that being in the rest of the city. We have to start looking at our other zones, because we do have our ESOs, sewer, emergency sewer overflows, which we do have to start reducing per our NPDS permit. So we have to keep that program up in the other areas of the city to keep cutting that back.
Okay? Alderman Dunn?
Yeah.
Still questions? Let's move on, Howard.
Into, oh, to the meters, basically, that outline item's staying the same this year. There's no new?
Page are we on, Howard?
202.
Thank you.
There's really no change in any operations, positive or negative, for this year into next year.
Questions? Okay.
204 is your, the water distribution itself. That's the pumping and the mains. No major projects. You do see under 90, or 80, 98. We do have money budgeted for the north reservoir, which is the ground storage reservoir rehab project, in the amount of 2.8 million.
That's on 205.
Correct.
And what's that for again, Howard? The 2.8?
Rehabbing the north reservoir with new pumps and controls.
The one in between the?
York and 290.
Okay. Questions?
Mayor, if I?
Alderman Bram? Yeah, I was trying to get my answer just by making eye contact with Paul. Were we talking about the 290 basin right there, off of York? We're talking further east, right?
We're talking the water reservoir on the east side where the helicopter landing once was.
Okay.
Landing pad, I should say, the landing pad for the hospital. That's a water reservoir underneath there.
All right. Thanks for that clarification.
I would add that Paul and his team are always evaluating that as well, whether or not, you know, the whole system. And we're talking about the reservoirs and whether we need all of them or not. And so we're constantly looking at that, to Alderman Ludo's point of what can we minimize?
How many do we have?
We have three. There's one in Butterfield Park.
Ah, okay, that's the one I was missing.
There's one by the tennis court at Elmhurst College, and then the north one that we just talked about.
Okay. Let's move on.
Under, on page 210, which is your, the wastewater admin, I'm sorry. 20. Page 210? I got, did I miss that? Page 208. One of our major items that we have in there every year is our membership, and that is in the Salt Creek work group. That is the group that has allowed us really to avoid a lot of regulations, and we work together with them and all the other wastewater plants along Salt Creek for common permitting issues and water quality issues. So that's still something good for us to belong to. And then again, the wastewater portion of the Public Works roof is in that account also. On page 211, the sanitary sewers, maintenance of the sanitary sewers. We have some minor increases and some maintenance material, but we do have an increase in our waste disposal from all of our dig-ups with the new regulations. We're requiring to monitor a lot more, and if it is any contamination, you do have to take it to a special landfill. And then there's also 51,000 for grounds. And again, that is just a real allocation of funds where we're more putting the landscape maintenance into the appropriate accounts instead of all under forestry.
Howard, where's that line item about the, where you dig up?
3081.
Alderman Dunn's question, the sanitary lining, what percentage complete are we, city-wise?
Just under 40%.
40%? Approximately, sorry. Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay.
And then the, page 214 is the wastewater treatment plant itself. Misaligning is up as far as electricity. Some lab fees are going up about 42,000 under 30, 33, and that's due to our new NPDS permit requirements. 5009, we do have grounds going up 70,000. Again, that's a reallocation of the accounts itself. But other than that, it's just the basic operations and then the large capital improvements that go along with that.
Any questions? Okay.
And that's it for the MUF, unless there's more questions.
Any questions? Any remaining questions before we move on? Alderman Dunn?
When is the, when are we going to see the capital show up under the wastewater treatment plant for the phosphorus?
When will that start to show up? Probably 2024?
Engineering starts in 2022.
Yeah, 2022, some of the preliminary engineering.
There's a CEB report currently.
Do you know what number that is?
No.
We'll get you the CEB number in a minute on that.
That's a couple of years from now.
70, CEB 77, page 77 on the CEB.
2023.
Paul, did you answer?
Oh, 2023.
Good? Okay. Additional comments or questions? All right.
Want to do preview or anything?
How long do we have, Howard, for? Is he?
Parking fund.
Parking and then get out of there for capital? Okay.
Yep. So the parking fund is one that we use to maintain the four and a half decks, I call it, because we have the public parking over at the 255 building. Each year, we engineer one and we maintain another. And I'll let Howard get into those details. But a couple of improvements that you'll see, we hope, yet this year, we have parts on order. One is for the Addison deck. We're putting in a warning sign when cars are approaching the street. So for, this is for pedestrians as they walk along Addison. It will be visual and audio sounds for cars that are approaching. And then at the large deck?
Leaving the deck and approaching?
When they are leaving the deck, yes, when they're exiting out onto the street. And then the other improvement that we're going to make is at the large deck, we're going to try a car counting system. We've heard frustration that when people get there to park in the morning, they maybe drive up to the top level, find that there's no parking spaces, have to drive all the way back down and go to another deck. And so we're going to try just a very simple one-in, one-out car counter. And we're starting with the large deck because that is all commuter, and so it makes no sense. The Addison deck, Schiller deck, those are mixed parking with shoppers and part-time people, and so that will prove a little more difficult. We're still looking at the other three decks, but we're going to start with the large deck. Parts are on order for all those, so we hope to have those improvements in yet this year. And I'll turn it over to Howard for any more detail.
So for the maintenance, the major increases we have coming this year, and again, because of the four and a half decks, we do rotate on a regular basis which ones are being evaluated for maintenance work and which ones being actually worked on in every given year. So next year, Schiller deck will have construction. We call it construction. That's repainting any lights that need to be worked on, any of the joints or sealants that need to be redone, or tuck pointing. And believe it or not, we'll actually be inspecting the Addison deck for work in 2021, because that's hitting the four-to-five-year point that that's already been in place for the city. So those are your major construction dollars in there under deck maintenance, 5014. We do have snow removal on 3072 is up about $39,000. With the heavy snows, we've been, we tried last year for an actual, a portable ice, snow melter that we rented for a day. So what happens is you bring it up there, for example, to have a truck go up to the top of Addison deck and drive back down is one mile round trip. So when you have multiple trucks that are going up and down to remove the snow, you know, you get mileage, they have to drive a mile up, down to the quarry, mile back, up to the top just to remove the snow. So we do have money that if we were to get a heavy snow buildup up there, that we could rent a snow melter, again, to try to make that more efficient and cut down those costs. And again, we do have some money if we need to start installing a few more electrical chargers at other decks in the city. But those are the major items in there.
And I want to add to Howard's comments, we did look at purchasing a snow melter. In fact, we had it in the initial budget, but we did cut that just for, because we didn't have the balance that we need. And so we're looking to continue to rent that for large snow events.
Okay. Alderman Ludo?
Thank you. Where, you mentioned that power counter in the large deck, where is that expenditure in here? And? Oh, the charging station.
Yeah, the count counter is actually in the 2019 budget. We're just waiting for the, all the parts to come in. We have most of them at the garage right now.
Oh, okay.
It's in the current budget, right. We don't have Addison deck projected out until 2021, so we can evaluate how this one works and to look at it. So we don't have that out till 2021. And then the electric chargers are in the 5014, are in CEB 79.
Under the 5014 maintenance?
Correct. Right, on page 223, again, CEB 79. And the big thing there is, we've been looking, we only show a city's share of 30,000 because we're trying to get through revenues, but also through the TIF and/or any grants available to install more.
Great, thank you.
A question on the parking system fund? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. Two questions. First is about the revenue side, and I don't know if this is appropriate for you or Mr. Trozine, but have we, or when was the last time we increased the fees or done a comparison in regards to the fees? I thought it was relatively recently, but I can't remember. And is that something we will be revisiting near term?
Near term, correct. So we, I don't recall the last time that we did raise the rates. Because of our grants that we've received for some of the decks, the construction, we've actually have to request to get approval from Metra to increase our rates. We actually did mention that to them. It appeared that they were open to that. And so we are looking, doing analysis right now on reviewing those rates for potential changes.
Which garages were Metra funds utilized? I know right large.
So the Adelaide deck and the Schiller deck, the base amounts are done, but the top level, I think we're still under grant terms for the top level of each of those. If you recall, we did add an additional level. And then the large deck, we did receive $2.5 million in funding also.
Gotcha. One other question, and it might be for Mr. Trozine. It seems like on page 221, 3101, uncollected late charges is a substantial amount of money every year, roughly 200-plus thousand every single year. If I'm reading what that line item is, it's what's owed to us and is not being paid by whomever. So approximately over four or five years, we're talking about $1 million that City of Elmhurst isn't collecting. Have we considered taking, I assume this is just friendly phone calls from the City of Elmhurst to whomever owes us? Have we thought about taking a different approach, hiring a company to follow up on these, or collecting them in some other way?
So we do have a collection agency. I think, if I recall correctly, probably two or three years ago, they changed the laws as far as we cannot actually put them on credit reports anymore. And we have taken the position of trying to collect the ticket amount, you know, first and stuff as far as the late fees. So we're actually looking at our late fees. It was probably when we did the adjudication, you know, we did the heavy step increases for a $25 parking ticket. It jumps to 50 to 100, and then $150. So we're taking a look at that, and we're actually taking a look at possibly adding in some more significant collection as far as suspended licenses also. We're reviewing that also. We understand that that's very effective.
I would think so. All right, thanks.
Additional parking system questions? Okay, let's move on.
Mayor?
Oh, what? Oh, oh.
Skinny pen.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So 219, just curious. So debt service, why did it go up 500K year over year?
I don't have the detail, but I think that was just a basis of the debt schedules and stuff as far as how they were laid out. So there's no new debt recently. I think it was just how the debt was laid out. Sometimes when we look at the total GO payments, we look at that, but then how do we allocate it to each of the funds where the money is borrowed, so.
So based on it flattening out the next year or so, I'm assuming that those schedules are sort of maxed out unless?
I don't believe they go up past that.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? All right, I think that's it, Howard.
Thank you.
This is Capital Improvement Fund, pages 162 to 165. I think the council's aware, this is really a lot of our general types of capital, where we allocate specific revenue sources, being a portion of our home rule sales tax, a quarter percent of that, utility tax, and 80% of our income tax gets allocated to the Capital Improvement Fund. You'll see that detail on page 164. On the expenditure side, page 165, you'll see as far as 2020 projected, the largest transfer then is to our general fund, paying for all those capital-related expenditures. You'll see the MUF fund, that was a portion of the Southwest Wet Weather Control Facility that the council decided that that would be funded from the CIF versus a stormwater or the municipal utility fund.
Tom, where's that expenditure? I missed the beginning.
I'm sorry. The expenditures, 165.
Right.
There's four line items. So the general fund transfer, a little over $4 million. The municipal utility fund, 568. You'll notice that the estimated for 1,108, we, but you'll see it, 2018 actual for MUF was zero. That transfer did not get done, and so we're doubling up for estimated 2019. Parking system line item, you'll see two years, 2018 actual and 2019. That's actually for the parking for Addison deck, and those two years that was funded And those two years, that was funded by, uh, the downtown CBD TIF. And you'll see that back now coming out of CIF. And then the transfers for our general obligation bonds.
I think we'll move on.
So next we'll move on to page 104, which is admin and elected officials. Mike Capp's gonna, uh, comment on a few of the details and then I'll take it back and talk about some things as well.
Yeah, if you look at, at this budget, it's really, comes under the city manager's responsibility more than anything, but I'd like to take a minute to talk about mine, I'm 6045, which is where the majority of our communications and general marketing dollars are, are budgeted.
Page 105, Mike.
Page 105, yeah, 6045. So if you indulge me for a minute, I want to go back to April 17th, 2013. After a major storm event, they produced about seven inches of rain in about 18 hours. Internal Mayor Levin and Mayor-elect Mortley, myself, the city manager, police, fire and public works, we're in the emergency operating center. And I think that's where we really, the need for timely, proactive communications was really identified. And since that time, we've hired a communications manager and we've, uh, approved our first strategic communications plan. We realize that, you know, communications to the citizens are a really important part of, uh, successful government. We know it doesn't stand by itself, but it is part of the success of any one of our activities or programs that we implement in the City of Elmhurst. Our communications manager continues to support the city by leading development, implementing communications and public relations, you know, in response to the city's needs. The current outlets we use right now are social media outlets, the front porch newsletter, the monthly e-newsletter, the city's website, which includes our news flash, civic alerts, and the online calendar, which we just improved this year, which makes it more, much more easier to, to use and to, uh, implement. And our city code red when we need, for instance, the communications plans. Along with that, general, uh, outlets for communication, other responsibilities right now are, just the newest one is the promo drive underpass for a city, uh, our communications manager, uh, implementing the strategic plan for communications. This year, the census 2020, our communications manager will be an important part of that. This year is the biannual citizen survey, which is the responsibility, has become the responsibility of every communications manager. Our explore Elmhurst campaign, our visitors guide, which goes into every hotel in the Chicagoland area. Uh, Elmhurst TV, which is being, uh, revitalized this year. We just approved the, um, franchise agreement with Comcast, which will allow us, once we get all the, uh, uh, implementation done and with all the equipment we need to put in here and our new fiber connections, uh, we're gonna start programming Comcast out of this building, just as we do with AT&amp;T. So you'll be able to watch it live if you have Comcast or AT&amp;T. It's also gonna allow us to do our own programming for like Channel 6. And that's gonna be the responsibility of your communications manager to main, to make sure that's continually programmed. You know, the way a franchise agreement works, if you don't program it, you don't get it, basically. You have to use it or you lose it. And so, uh, communication manager will be responsible to keep that programmed. One of the things we're doing this year with the Elmhurst TV program, too, our cable TV, which I think it's one of the line items coming up here, is we're gonna do a lot more short like PSAs and stuff where we're gonna do them at different time. We'll do like a five-minute, three-minute, 30-second, depending on where we're gonna use it, we'll use a different length one. So, um, the Elmhurst TV is gonna be revitalized this year. And communication manager also facilitates and manages the trolley program. This year also, uh, we started a guide to city services, which is gonna be like, um, we're talking, we're being printed, but it'll also be digitally available for every resident to get the basic functions of the city and, and how to go about doing something you need to do that, uh, has to do with city services. And that, the plan right now is that'll go out in January of 2020. And we're continuing to research the citizens engagement platform. So we wanna, we wanna allow the citizen to be able to put in a request either on the website or by a mobile app and follow that request to the finish line. And so, um, we're, we're trying to find one right now that meets all of our needs. And if we, we're hoping by, I don't know, maybe end of first quarter, beginning of second quarter next year, to like a soft implementation of a new citizen engagement app. This year also, we started a new program, Employee Onboarding Tour, which we took new employees, uh, most importantly, we focused on employees that are interfacing with the city and a, a city residents on a regular basis. And we took them around the city and we took them to all our major, uh, facilities and each department did like a tour of their facility. And to give the people that are like on the phone talking to residents a better clear picture of what it is that they're talking about, when someone mentions about the public works garage or one of the police station, fire station, uh, history museum. And, uh, it was, it went over very successfully. The, the, uh, employees that took it were very appreciative that we allowed them to go on that tour and they learned a lot about the different, uh, programs that, uh, facilities the city has. The other really important part of the communications manager is incident command, uh, when there's a type of, uh, natural or man-made disaster or any emergency. And the importance of getting good information as quickly as possible, working with either the fire chief, the police chief, whatever the incident would be, to make sure that we got some timely, uh, information going out to the residents. And that was, when we talked about earlier about that, that flood issue we had, where it was really important that we got some information, even if it's just like a holding statement to say, hey, here's, here's what we know so far. It's really important that we're putting out information that's accurate. You don't wanna, we don't wanna put out, uh, inaccurate, inaccurate information or make, um, guesses as far as what we think the situation is. And the other thing that we found out with this too is that we were so connected with all the other entities in the, in the city, the library, uh, the hospital, the park district, the schools, that we're, we're all a very important part of each other's communication. We just found this out recently with some of the events that happened. And, uh, one of the things that our communication manager set up a while ago was that we do quarterly meetings with the PIOs, Public Information Office, from these other organizations to try to build our relationship and to do some training. In fact, the last one we had, the police and fire chief were there at the meeting and they basically laid out their expectations, what they feel is important when it comes to communication, what we should share, what we shouldn't share. And it gives an opportunity to critique incidents that happened before, so we can all have a learning process as far as what's the best way to do this communications, um, between all our organizations. The communication manager also works with all the different departments, all the commissions, to try to do, um, developing new innovative ways to communicate with the residents or the stakeholders that are large based, based on, uh, the audience that's needed. Based on all of that, you know, we believe that department services surpass the ability of one full-time employee. This year, the admin budget and 1002 has funding for a part-time communications coordinator. Uh, this coordinator will support the communications manager's responsibility for developing, executing, public relations and public information programs. This issue will perform a variety of work related to the city's communication efforts and would help achieve city-wide strategic communication goals. The highlight here of support would include reputation, reputation management, social media and incident communications. We just feel to remain effective in the area of service, we need to keep up with the ongoing trends in communication, including the demands and expectations of receiving often and instantaneous communications from the city. So, I'd like to answer any questions regarding that position.
Lauren Levin?
So, did you say part-time or half-time?
Part-time. We're figuring 25 hours a week is what our expectation is at this point.
And that's, uh, that's a employee or that's, that's kind of...
That'd be an employee.
Um, I have a slightly different question, but I'll, I'll throw it out now. One of the things, I can't remember what you called it, um, in terms of tracking requests by residents?
Correct.
Um, 'cause I remember last year we talked about, not that we're, our requests are more important than residents, but a lot of times residents will call an alderman and say, "I have an issue with this lot or parking here." And I've felt a little frustrated sometimes that they can, our request can fall off the radar and we think it might be handled or it might not, and the resident will call back and say, "Remember, I called you three weeks ago. What's happened?" And I mean, I, this is not a criticism, but I, I think that, well, I guess the question is, does that system that you refer to also tie into aldermanic requests that are made on behalf of residents in the ward?
Yes, that, I mean, that's our plan right now. And the one we're looking at right now actually, it allows us to categorize it out too. So there can be public requests, private requests, you can silo off different categories, organizations or groups if you would like to. But irregardless of how you set that thing up, whatever, when the crest, the request goes in, it gets tracked to completion. And, um, that's what we're trying to find the one that meets us exactly on. We, there's different ones out there that have, have really good things about them. We're trying to find the one that'll, uh, satisfy all of our needs, 'cause even though it looks like, so if you put a request in and we can set the criteria, if you don't get a response, you should get a response right away, but if you don't get an update within a certain amount of time, 24 hours, 48 hours, 72 hours, it gets kicked up to the supervisor, whoever it went to, to therefore to keep track of like, what happened with this one here, in case someone's on vacation, in case they missed the email or text, however we set it up. So the idea is, yes, it will, there'll be, there'll be ability to track any type of request and even internal requests. So we're talking about even doing like, right now, our, our IT requests are done through an email right now, and then our, then our IT staff actually puts it into a software. And that's one of the things we're trying to do is get better data, you know, the dashboard and all this stuff or the, uh, the, I'm trying to think of a word. The analysis is, is good on this too, 'cause it, it allows us to know what kind of requests we're getting, what kind of response time we have on that request. And so even like for the IT requests, for instance, if we're getting a whole bunch of requests on printers, well, maybe there's some kind of system problem with the, with the way the printers are set up or the type of printer we have. So, I mean, that's the idea, that's what the citizen engagement app, that's what we're hoping for it to accomplish, uh, the tracking of requests and to be able to do good data analysis on what type of requests we're getting and a kind of response to them.
All right. And I, I will just say generally, I, I think that Cassandra in particular has done a, a great job, but if we, you know, when I look back to what, where we started in 2013 and we didn't have, you know, communications plans, we didn't, I mean, it was at the point, I remember saying, "We want to send out a robo-call and how do we do it?" We had to call the former mayor, Pete DeCian, and say, "Can we use," you know, we had to go through his company or something, which was, um, you know, good thing he wasn't on vacation, I guess. So I think our communications have really come a, a long way over the last five, six years, and we've made a lot of demands in the communication area. So I, um, again, we have to watch every line of the budget, but I do think this is one where there's a need to support, um, more communications, um, particularly 'cause they, this is what our residents count on.
Mayor, if, if I can add one comment to what Mike was just explaining, the, the community app was in the budget this year and, uh, we, we had a company under contract and we were pretty far down the road in designing it, and that company got bought. And the new company tried to, um, uh, push their contract, their new contract language onto the city, which we did not agree with. And so that forced us to go and look for a new development company, which is why the community app has not been put in place yet. It was our goal to put it in place this year, we just couldn't do that.
Lauren Pluto?
I echo Alderman Levin's comments about, um, you know, the quality and improvement in our communication. And, you know, I support the concept of, of exploring the, this, a new position. I guess I'm wondering if, um, or have you considered and why one alternative might be better than, the alternative you're proposing is better than the other, but, you know, would you consider doing it as a contractor instead of an, as an employee to start, um, see if it works out and then maybe more, you know, add the position permanently or the part-time position permanently in the future? Or did you consider that? And if so, why are you recommending what you're recommending?
I mean, we'll continue to investigate that. At the time, you know, we hired contractors when Cassandra was on leave and the cost was much greater than it was for our own part-time, up at our part-time position.
Okay. That makes sense then, thank you.
Lauren Bram?
Thank you. I guess I, different than Alderman Levin's comments, I, I agree with Alderman Levin from a standpoint of, I think our communication overall, over the last, whatever it's been, five-plus years, has improved significantly. I do have concern, this is where I differ, um, of adding another position, albeit full-time. Alderman Tulludo's suggestion of maybe doing a contract position is a good one, in my view. But I just don't know at this time if there's a need. Maybe the scope of the current communication, which I thought the title was coordinator or manager, um, is too large. I, I don't know the, the reason, but I would like to make that line item on page 104, I believe it's 1002, as a circle back item.
It was 1002, right? Part-time?
Yes.
Yes. Additional comments or questions? Levin?
I just want to add something that people may not be aware of, and that is that the laws have changed a little bit in the last year or two, so there's been a tightening up of what people would call contract services. So if you bring someone in and they're working for you here, uh, in your facility and taking direction, um, you can't, uh, really call them contractors anymore to get around the title of employee. So if you're saying, "I want you to do one specific task," like go out and divide, design a, a manual, and they go off and do it and bring it back, that would be contract services. But if you want someone to supplement what our staff is doing, um, under those tightened regulations, we'd have to say, "You are an employee."
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, before we move on, I want to add a couple of things as it relates to communications. I mean, philosophically, when I ran for office 13 years ago, I knew I was gonna come in and cut heads. I was gonna reduce head count. And for the most part, the city's been pretty good at keeping head count stable, maybe reducing it a little bit. Rarely do I think that improving, that increasing head count is warranted or needed. But, um, in the 12, 13 years I've been doing this, I'd say there's two places where I think, uh, the head count increase was needed and has paid off. One is development. When I first got on council, we actually cut our development department. We got rid of it. I had, and boy, was I naive. That was my first two years. Based on what I know, I never would have supported that. I think development is, uh, you've heard me say it before, you keep your foot on the pedal or else you're just going backwards. Um, and, uh, so I can't say enough about the fact that, of our development team and what they've done. The other position that I can pick out specifically that I wouldn't count, that, that I would add and wouldn't cut and would even add to would be our communications. So as mayor, you know, I get to interface with a lot of departments, but I would say the ones I probably interface with most are, you know, um, Jim Grabowski and his staff, Mike Capp and the development group and Cassandra, almost on a daily basis. Uh, information is power, knowledge is power. We have a very sophisticated, um, clientele. Our residents are very sophisticated. And I think every alderman on this dais understands the demands for information. And I honestly don't know how we got, uh, along without a communications person. I can, I can't attest to everybody at City Hall and entire staff about their workload, but I can attest to Cassandra's. She is not, she can't handle 100% of what she has. She does an unbelievable job. She's invaluable. But you know how most of us have jobs where you could always work till midnight? Cassandra can do that and actually oftentimes does. Um, this is one where, uh, and I had to deal with the external folks when Cassandra was on leave, so I know the quality of work. Nice folks. They don't have the institutional knowledge that someone who works at City Hall does. Part-time position, in my opinion, is more than warranted. There's always more that we can do. Social media is a killer and Cassandra is top of her class. I wanted to mention what Mike Capp also mentioned, this, um, this public information officer group that gets together, um, park, school, city, hospital, college. And really, to have that, those lines of communication open when they have issues, 'cause any one of those entities I talked about can have their own individual issue, but we're the only one that overlaps with them. So it's invaluable that we have that. I know Cassandra is one of the ringleaders, as I'll say. I know Cassandra is one of the ringleaders, as I'll say, of that group, having police and fire participate in that, I know has paid immediate dividends to what gets communicated to our residents. So I can't say, I can't stress how important communication is to the residents of Elmhurst and staff communications. One correction and one point of clarification. We did ask Pete DeCiani to help us with the robo-call, but it wasn't his company. I don't want people to think that we gave that the old mayor business, so it wasn't his company. And just a point of clarification, Mr. Kopp, you mentioned that we had a communications problem when Alderman Levin was mayor, but we addressed it after he was gone. Is that what I'm hearing? You don't have to answer that.
Sounds like it's time to move on.
Are we referring to the morally flood of 2013?
I have one more point to talk about in this budget, Mayor, and that's on page 105, and that is line 6098, Other Expenses. As the council knows, we have 16 volunteer commissions, and the last couple of years, we've been able to recognize them at an event. When this budget was put together, you and I, Mayor and I, had not had a chance to talk about that event, and so we did not plug in a number for that event. However, since we've talked, and I would recommend that we do put $10,000 back into that line item. We have some positive variances in this year's number where we feel we can do that. And I think it was an important event for the last couple of years for our volunteer commissioners to attend. We've received some very good feedback on that, and so with the council's indulgence, we'd like to do that.
Okay. I know that that was a suggestion from an Alderman, actually, and we have, actually, I think, my count is 18 boards and commissions and over 100 volunteers. And it's tough enough to get these people to do it, quite frankly. A little bit of thank you not only goes a long way, but actually, there's some cross-functionality between some of the commissions as well. So invaluable event, so in my opinion, it's out of $140 million budget, it's the least we could do for these people who put in literally thousands of hours, they expect nothing back. So I would agree, and it's a big chunk of that's on me for not getting back to the city manager about when and how we were going to host that, but the intention was to do that again, so. Additional questions? Okay, Mr., oh, sorry, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Page 107, under Salary and Wages of Elected Officials. I don't have a proposal now, but I'd like to add this to the circle back. The current compensation for elected officials was set in 2001, at a time when the hourly minimum wage was $5.15. Current minimum wage is $13 an hour. So I think it's, it moves us to at least have a conversation on it. Not prepared to do that exactly with detail tonight, but I'd like to at least have that on the docket for our circle back.
Okay. And Mr. Grabowski, when we put that on the circle back, I want to also cover on that, if a current council votes it in, how long it is before it actually happens? Because I know it's not instantaneous, it's not like we vote ourselves a raise. So I appreciate what Alderman Kennedy's doing, but let's make sure that's clear to the public as well, we're not up here voting ourselves a raise.
We will have that detailed.
Okay, great.
Next is page 108, the Board of Fire and Police Commission. Generally, Human Resources addresses that and staffs that, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Kopp if he has any comments.
No, I mean, there's really nothing new in this budget. It's the normal process that we always use, the police and fire commissions, the hiring of police and firefighters, and the professional service is 3052. The largest portion of that budget is the polygraph test that we give police and fire candidates before we hire them.
And just as a reminder, the full-time wages and the part-time wages are that share of HR, which addresses Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, those commissioners are not paid.
Which is an allocation of staff time.
Correct.
Okay. Questions or comments? Okay, let's move on.
Thank you, next we will go to page 109, Finance, and I will turn that over to Mr. Trozine.
Basically, a status quo budget, just want to point out a couple of line items. One thing that, line item 3005, Banking Expenses. I know this was a topic last year, it's still on our to-do list to bring that back to the Finance Committee to review those expenses that really entail general banking costs, but then credit card fees also, and the discussion of how we handle those.
What percent of that, all 130,000, what percent of that is credit card fees?
Probably 100-plus thousand of it.
Okay, thanks.
One other line item that you'll notice actually in 19 estimated, under Other Expenses, 6098, that was unbudgeted, you'll see the estimate of $18,500. That was for some emergency expenses that we incurred to actually take care of some records that got damaged when a pipe burst in our back storage unit. So we had to do some salvage of those documents, and that's what that line item is. Outside of that, again, pretty much status quo.
Questions for Mr. Trozine about Finance? Yeah, let's move on.
The next would be Legal, and that's page 152. And so we break that out in four categories. We have Prosecutor for DUI and the traffic offenses. Then we have our Labor Council, and as noted, that is increasing. We have two union contracts coming up this spring, both police and fire will have a need for Labor Council. Although both chiefs are doing a good job in reducing that cost and trying to take on as much of that as they can. And then by far, the largest amount is just the general dollar amount for Strino Romello and Durkin, as we've seen it average through the years.
Questions about Legal?
Alonzo Brennan.
Thank you. So with respect to, you know, retaining legal counsel, are they on retainers, or are they reimbursed through an hourly, you know?
We have an hourly agreement with them.
Okay, thank you.
Alonzo Brennan.
Thank you. To follow up on Alderman Brennan's question, I know, I think we discussed it briefly last year, do we, as a city, periodically review if the retainer system is a good direction to move to compared to continuing the hourly rate for our legal counsel?
So we do look at that, and in fact, recently, we've done a survey on hourly rates for municipal attorneys, and we are very low compared to our surrounding communities in DuPage County. So honestly, on an hourly basis, we're getting a very good deal for our attorney. That rate has not changed in 10 years. So, you know, there's pluses and minuses to the retainer side, there's a limited number of hours on the retainer. We've, I think we've done a good job in the last few years of reducing the amount of phone calls to the attorney's office to try to bring that bill down, and I know that Mr. Strino himself goes through the bill every month and probably doesn't bill us for every little phone call and piece of advice that he gives, trying to keep in mind our budget.
One other question in regards to adjudication, if someone can touch on that, is that still viable? I know years back, we brought it in-house, I don't know how many years back, but...
Yeah, I would say it's a very viable program, not only from the city's benefit, because we don't have to send people out to Wheaton, and we don't have to send employees, and, but it's more convenient for the residents to come here for those type of minor offenses to be adjudicated. So I would recommend we continue with that.
And we're breaking even from a revenue expense side of things on that?
I think we're more than breaking even, yeah.
Thank you. That's a, kind of a constant push-pull with DuPage County, is they're doing some consolidation and stuff with judges and courthouses and all this other kind of stuff. And the municipalities, this is something we talk about quite a bit at DMMC, the municipalities want to push more adjudication our way because it is a net positive. But then, two other points the city manager pointed out, residents don't have to go to Wheaton, they can come here. And even more importantly, our police officers don't have to travel all the way out there. So it's a big win, we're actually, we would do it if we were allowed. Okay, city manager?
Yes.
Claims?
Yes, claims, pretty simple, two-item, two-line budget, very self-explanatory. If anybody has any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Claims are what they are, right?
Correct.
Not a whole lot we can do about controlling the quantity or anything else, I mean, besides best practices in general. Any questions on claims? Okay?
Moving on to Human Services, that's page 156. This is a number of programs that we run, mainly the Senior Citizen Taxi Program, the Meals on Wheels, and the Senior Citizen Council Grant. We have seen great success with the new taxi program, Ride DuPage. The reliability has gone up significantly, and that was the biggest issue that we faced. We knew that costs were going to go up a little bit as well, but we think that's a great benefit for the residents. And then the Youth Commission has made their request to bring some additional programming. I know that they have been very active in that, as recently as a week ago, I believe, they had a program. And then the Senior Citizen Commission, that's for their coffees and conversation on Saturdays. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Alonzo Brennan.
Just Ride DuPage is 6049?
Yes, sir.
And that was one where actually our senior commission, I think, supported switching over because the service is so bad with the individual ones we are funding ourselves, so glad it's working out. Anyone else? All right, let's move on.
Thank you, and the next page, 157, is Health Services. That covers our contract with Superior Ambulance and also our mosquito abatement contract.
City manager, is there any data available, any metrics about the effectiveness of mosquito abatement?
We can inquire with our contractor and see what numbers they might have.
Alonzo Hanquist.
Question, I assume this would be a spot, and I have missed a couple meetings, so if I incorrect, correct me. Other pests, we've had this discussion in the past.
Dunks, coyotes, et cetera?
Exactly. Is this place maybe to do a circle back and just see if we should discuss any of those?
How we handle them, if we want to handle them differently?
Yeah, I think we started, correct me if I'm wrong, but with the coyotes, with the local group, I can't remember now, but anyway, yes, that's my question. Or my topic.
You got it.
Okay. We'll go back on critters. Okay? City manager?
Next page, 158, Cable Television. That's something that Mike Kopp already touched on, as far as how we're transforming to the smaller PSAs. This covers, also coverage of our meetings here, and did you want to talk about Elmhurst TV? So we're happy to answer, any additional questions?
Anyone? Motion to stop televising our meetings? Lot of support, we'll put that on the circle back, maybe. Kidding. Any questions for city manager, Alonzo Toledo?
What is the, I'm sure you've said this before, what is the $100,000 cover for professional services?
That's a recording of all our meetings, and it's the, our kind of town stuff you see before, the events that are videoed. It's our, most of that goes through our contractor, does all our video filming, like I see the parades and the...
The talent, or the person behind the camera?
The person behind the camera. The talent is normally...
Unpaid, unpaid.
Paid, unpaid talent.
So it's, so it's paying people to like do the filming?
Correct, they film it, they edit it.
Aren't we doing some stuff with some of the new equipment that we approved? That's, is that going to lower any of that?
That's more of the recording of it all, it's really not the filming of it. So I mean, the filming's gotten better now, because, you know, you used to have to go out with like a three-person crew, a sound guy, a camera guy, and producer, director, whatever, the gaffer, or whatever it is called. So, I mean, now it's more, a lot of times, one person go out with one camera, because the technology's that much better. But then, the editing's a big part of it too. So we will film these events that we do, and then the editing of them to get them down to what we want them for. Like some of the PSAs we're doing right now, like I said, we're doing like a five-minute one, a three-minute one, a 30-second one, depending on what outlet we're using it. But to edit those down to where we want to do them, it's, I mean, that's a big, that's a big cost in the whole filming of...
It's professional services related to the production of the content that we're going to put on our channel.
Correct.
And it, various things, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay?
With the last eight minutes, I believe Tom wants to talk about inter-fund transfers.
You think he wants to?
Yeah.
Okay.
So as mentioned, when we talked about the Stormwater Fund, I think there was questions as far as the revenue and the transfer out for the 19 bond issue. You'll see that identical reason in line item 9837. So that $85,000 was the portion of the debt that would be transferred to the bond fund for the 19 issue. That will go away in the carryovers, because recently, the Finance Committee and the council, through the tax levy report, agreed to abate all the debt outstanding. So, and then the 9839, there's a transfer to the Stormwater Fund, $900,000.
Okay. Questions? Okay, before I, as for a motion to adjourn, city manager, let's just go over our schedule real quick. So, next Monday, all circle backs?
All circle back, I have five by my count, five circle back items.
And you were going to publish a list and corresponding, at least information, not 100% of the answers, but at least what the question was, and hinting to as much as you can fit on a page.
Correct.
And that'll go out this week?
Correct.
And then we'll do regular city meeting, ready council meeting, and then we'll do circle back after. And then, as required by law, final budget will be prepared, and we will vote it on the 16th.
That's correct.
Questions?
Alonzo Brennan.
Yeah, at the same time, will we be getting, within the next week or two, the carryovers?
Yes, we're putting those together, and we will get those to the council.
Thank you.
Alonzo Toledo.
So for some of the things that were different in the proposed budget than what we approved for the tax levy, like you just mentioned with the debt service, like that 85, in the final budget, does that get corrected in this document? I mean, we may not get the physical one reprinted, but the one that gets presented to the public for approval, et cetera?
So the actual ordinance will show those differences in the ordinance, and so we will, in the carryovers, we will have columns for council adjustments, staff adjustments, and carryovers. So again, and I think the 85 in the revenue line item is page 90, that's where that will be zeroed out as far as for the property tax levy for that debt service. But they will be adjusted, and you'll see the different columns. So it's really just the budget ordinance, but basically line item.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
So like, if a resident, you know, this was, this document has been published, and it's available on the website. When we approve the ordinance with the various changes from what was originally presented, do they have to go through an ordinance then to see the true approved 2020 budget? Or is there eventually a, this document corrected so that they can go to one source? They have to like literally, they would have to... so that they can go to one source? They have to like, literally, they would have to triangulate between the proposed, the ordinance changes to what the actual line item would be?
So we don't republish this document. We do basically have two documents that end up, that the council will see, the carryover document, and then the actual budget ordinance that lists all the accounts. So you would basically need all, both of those to track through what's been changed.
Thank you.
Additional questions? I entertain a motion to adjourn, which was by Sabatino, second by Alderman Deuter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hosed. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.